So I'm not sure, I think we just present this document that shows the current and the proposed.
Because people will say, well, how did you arrive at these fees? You can say, well, we have, now we have other towns. And I'm happy to provide that information, I have it right here, here's the other town. But I wouldn't, I think Larry's right, I wouldn't apply it unless somebody asks the question. I don't think you're gonna have anybody ask questions on this, I really don't.
Did you run an average? So did you take all the towns and say, you know, if you have 10 towns, did you take all of the minus up to the, done an average of those?
No, but it's...
That'd be something interesting to do.
The only thing that is prob, I mean with the whole comparison, that's kind of weird is that's a lot of them, you know, some of them basically have the a butter notice fee, the miler fee, coffee fee in their home. So like you're saying, okay, it's 75 and then you're paying all those things. So those fees get higher and then others seem to, so it's either like, you know, kind of lower and then those get tacked on, or it's high and that's because it kind of includes everything. Similar to like the zoning, like they're paying for the ad and everything.
So we need to, we need to make that clear because in the zoning board application fee, the $200 covers not only the notice in the newspaper, but the a butter's notice. Whereas in the subdivision fee, that covers our paperwork, but we're not having to do the a butter's notice. We're going to have them do it per a butter's notice, it's in our application.
Yeah, and that, I mean, this wouldn't, I don't think we would also, I mean, we're not gonna roll this out because it's not gonna be approved, but you know, I think we could add a note on it that says a butter notices, fees and registry fees per current rates are also gonna apply. But I also don't wanna get in the trap of, okay, we have 750 and then the mail costs 10, and so two years later we go. But I don't know that that has to be on here because that's not gonna actually be part of the item that's voted on. It's just an explanatory.
And one of the things you also mentioned is the fact that the RSA says in terms of zoning warnings, they have been, still have been in newspaper, they haven't changed that. Whereas a lot of our warnings now, we can do it on the subdivision stuff, we can do it via the town.
By the website, yeah.
Another aspect, maybe with some of these other towns having higher rates is you're probably dealing with professionals, are they not? When they're submitting their applications, it's not just some volunteer board, it's, they're submitting to be.
No, no, it's still the planning, still the planning board. But in the case like Newport, they would have a planning director, maybe an assistant.
A staff.
There'd be a staff there.
There'd be a staff member, they're paid a lot more than anybody else.
And they're all, and they're all.
And their fees that they're collecting are part of what is paying their staff.
Okay, yes, absolutely. So you, you know, you're comparing apples and oranges. So it really wouldn't serve us particularly well to say, okay, this town has got, you know, $200 when we do, because we don't know what's going into the $200. And it could be any number of these things we've talked about.
And there's also no, I mean, for driveway permit, it's from 35 to 50. But we don't know what they're doing. Are they just signing off, are they looking at the drawing, just signing it? Maybe they have an inspector, so I guess, yeah, I don't know, it's kind of hard.
But I know, my understanding is that they're trying to get some control over driveways, correct?
Yes.
Make sure they're put in properly, as opposed to mine.
So the only other problem we have, and not with the fees, but the only other issue that we have is, we have forms for all of this, we don't have, unless Melissa found it or it come across, we don't have a certificate of compliance, do we? Alright, so I'll create that.
Do we know what compliance constitutes?
I'm gonna use the definition.
I could see this becoming.
Basically gonna create a form that says, oh, basically create a form that says that the Select Port of Freud certifies compliance to our zoning and building standard regulation, building standards and regulations, and we do not warrant the quality construction or blah, blah, blah. Just to get, and then should have people look at that. Select order.
And that's in the, and that's another thing, people may just be like, what even is this certificate of compliance? And then that may be, well, it's already in here.
It's already in, and it's already in here.
We have maybe not been doing it, but.
Right, so they bring in a site plan, they bring in a site plan, show us where they're gonna put a garage and that all of the setbacks are correct, and they're going to, you know, move the driveway from here to here to access it, and the well and everything is all correct. So then, the certificate of compliance, because we agree that they are building it correctly and they have made all of the requirements provided by our zoning ordinance.
So we should, we should update the, we should update the building permit form to say that the final requirement is to obtain a certificate of compliance from the select. Right?
Yep.
Because unless we have that tie in on the form, how would anyone know that?
Right, and they will not know that.
Building permit or the driveway permit?
No, we should put it on the building permit form. Yeah, because driveway permit really doesn't need a certificate of compliance. I mean, people have land that they can pull a driveway permit for and just use it for access. They don't have to build a house there. So it really should be for a building permit, for a structure.
And, okay, well, does a certificate of compliance require a site visit by somebody?
It's gonna require a select board site visit for evidence provided by the homeowner that it's done. Because again, we're not given a CO, so.
No, no, it would already be occupied.
Wouldn't you want Joe to go look at it?
I don't know who, no, select board would go look at it. Under this ordinance right now, that's all select board. Now, we can change that, but we need to try the process first and see how that works. I don't think you're gonna be doing that.
I think that Joe would be more so involved with the driveway.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yes, correct.
Joe would do that.
Joe always.
So I'll fix the typo, and then I think the other stuff we talked about is, I can send it. And I think other stuff is just more in that explanation.
And get rid of those two blank lines because people wonder what's supposed to be.
Skate too.
You've left out.
Okay, that's, Chris, that's. He could figure that out, yeah, okay. So we, any other questions on the fees?
No.
Move, oh.
If I can.
You owe me.
Again, talking books. It's gotta be a little.
I give you the grace, just because I won't, I won't bust your chops about it because there's nobody else on the board. So it doesn't really matter.
The fees for the zoning application, you were talking about them, including the the advertising newspaper and the notices to a butter's. Right now, I mean, the zoning ordinance doesn't say anything about what the application fee includes. So I don't know if you could amend the zoning ordinance to say that it, the $200 fee, whatever it is, includes advertising and notice to a butter's. I'm, I'm a little reluctant, I would like to say to, because most, I don't think other towns do it anyway, is to include the certified, the certified mail fees in that application. That's something over and above that the butter's, excuse me, the applicant pays because we don't know how many butters.
And that's why we don't have it included in our subdivision fees. Our subdivision application is, you know, how many lots? This is what it is for those. This is how many butters because of where the parcel of land is, so these are your butters. So it's this many a butters times this new post office fee, because that changes, as we've all known last few years, equals such and such. And then we go there, plus then there's the copies and milers that have to be recorded.
So. Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure with the ordinance because I don't think any of it says, like, this is for specific.
There's no breakdown.
That's kind of. Of the fees, you just say, these, this is the application fee.
Right.
So you pay, but who knows what that includes?
Well, you gotta give somebody, we know it can include an ad in a newspaper which are horrendously expensive. What'd you say, was it?
Seventy, seventy.
Or like a small. So that's something, okay, at some point, if you're doing, moving any step around, we're gonna have to get the assessors involved, right? I mean, the assessors are involved, so that's a clause, right?
Not for the zoning.
Not for zoning.
Not for zoning.
Basically, yeah, they are, as a matter of fact, that the zoning variance you gave the guy up on Rocky Mountain where he wants to put an addition on his house. The assessors, if somebody's gonna have to go.
He shouldn't do that on, in there.
He'll do it in the pickups.
On the paper.
In the pickup thing?
If he puts an addition on his house, he'll pull a building permit, and if it's after April 1st, he'll pick it up next year, therefore, that's a typical.
And then there's no inspection of that, it's just every third year they could take a look.
They'll pick it up because it'll go on next tax year. That's, that's a typical pickup, assessing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to think what else, because last, it was gonna be 20, and then I think originally way back said, okay, the, before we actually talked to you guys, I think the zoning said it's gonna be 50. But then last week was the time when we somehow got to the 200, so.
Well, can you realize, RSA says you have to have this notice in the paper.
So, so, you know, if somebody's coming in for a variance, that's why they would do that application fee. And any variance should be reviewed by legal. Reviewed by legal. Should be, because only a lawyer can tell you whether they may meet the five requirements for variance. That's, that's the role of zoning board, we're judicial.
Correct, but you guys, but we're also all volunteers who don't know the RSAs and the laws, so. If you, if you come in. So if somebody comes in and asks for a variance, and the zoning board grants a variance against an RSA, and then a butter has an issue with that, butter could sue the town for authorizing a variance ex parte of the, of the five, of the five.
We can take an appeal. They can ask for a review hearing and then take an appeal if they lose that.
Right.
But that's, that happens all the time.
That's okay.
Well, I, I mean, the other way you could approach it is say, you know, we've had 20 for how many ever, many years? You know, 30, 40 years, so basically for probably at least half of the time, we've been losing money.
Yep. How many variants does the zoning board issue? How many variants a year do you do?
We've only had three.
Yeah, I've been, I've been on it in three years.
But they're usually dimensional variances, right? Variances to a setback, they're not hard to, they're not, so it's, it's just, oh. They're dimensional variances because, oh, if I do this, I'm a non-conforming lot of record and I'm already in the 35-foot setback, and what I wanna do is going to make creep into the 35-foot setback more, but it's not gonna disturb anything. So it's a dimensional variance. That's not gonna create a big issue or a butter issue. Or they might want upon the wellhead protection.
What if they own a two-acre lot and it's a three acres, it's three acres zone?
Non-conforming lot of record.
Right, so that would be a variance.
Yep.
Okay. And in that case, I think that, that the question is, what do we wanna have the fee at 200 and include a butter's notices? Is that what you're saying, Bruce?
Yeah. Somewhere along the way, people have gotta know when they pay this $200, is that it? Or am I also gonna get hit for something else? And, and I don't know whether that's selective. I mean, I guess you could put it in the zoning ordinance. But I don't, I don't know if you.
Well, this, the site plan, because now they have a two-acre lot and it's supposed to be a three-acre lot, and they're expanding the use of the lot, or they're changing the use, if they're going from residential and they wanna put in a business, then they would have to do a site plan review. But this would keep them, where, where are, where are the, where are you planning to put the parking for a business that you wanna put in your garage?
I understand that, right, but I don't know.
Gonna be another.
The question is, do we wanna include your butter notices in the fee and justify the 200?
Right. What, what if you were to include up to a certain number of butter notices and then an additional fee or something over?
I think the only issue is then, it's, then why don't we put them in the other ones?
Right.
Yeah, so we're the same, so I think if it's not in the subdivision, it's not in this.
Okay, once you go by the $75 basic application fee plus whatever costs to put this thing in the paper, and that number is not going down anytime soon, and that time, you know, the, they change the RSA to allow you to form them in the town website.
I think so, $75 application fee and associated costs for notification. Would be a butter's and newspaper.
I think that's much better.
No, but not to a butter's, why don't we, because as Chris points out, why do we get people with your butter's fee for this but not for these up above?
We do it for the subdivisions, we, we have, they make, they pay for the a butter's notice.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what I said, so associated costs of notification, which would be newspaper and a butter's.
Why don't we just make that consistent across all the whole?
Yeah, but why a butter's, why would we pay for a butter's notifications for that, not for them above?
They're saying reduce the fee and then put on the forms that, um, the associated fee is this plus associated cost of notification, and I think that covers us.
Instead of 200, make it 150.
Make it 75.
Make it 75.
No, 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 75 eats up the entire budget in terms of.
Oh, for the, for the newspaper.
But no.
Oh, no, that's included in the notification.
Cost of notification.
So if it's a three-inch notice, that 210 bucks, they can bill for that separately. So the fee, yeah, so the fee for the application is 75. Okay, we put on the bottom, subject to notifications.
Yes.
Cost of notification.
So I think that's a great idea. So 75, so now are we putting that on this and saying?
No, just put the T there.
Yes, just 75.
So that would go onto this, but this is a later, okay, so this is going to 75, so I gotta edit this.
Where are you gonna put the subject and notification?
On the form, the application.
On the application, yes.
The application form, we'll have to update our application.
Yes.
But again, these won't be approved until the town meeting at the variance, so.
Okay, got you.
So we're still getting rid of the permit fee, okay.
$2. Okay.
So now, I guess my only question is, I've kinda marked this up.
No, 200 becomes.
Yes, and I'm fixing pet fee, that lot. So do we have to vote now to say as this fee structure is that we're, we're gonna present a public hearing next week, or I mean, three weeks?
Two weeks.
Anyway, um, do we have to vote to say, okay, this is, or we just go to, okay, the public hearing, this is what we've proposed? Okay, so I'll pick the edit, I will email the file. And I also had the current fees, which I was gonna try to hammer out and finalize, but I put pet lot fee there too. So I gotta fix that and I'll email it, and then that needs to get posted.
Yes.
This is the current, because it's not anywhere.
We have to get that on the website, yes, thank you.
Okay, so I will do the.
We are all in agreement then, 75 bucks, subject to that. Okay, moving on to site plan review.
Yep, so I made the changes that Bruce suggested, there was a change, change building to project. Instead of build, building, I changed it to project, because what if they're not building? And then I updated your other suggested change, which was somewhere in here. It, it to compliant, which I thought was good, very good. So then, the idea now is that we attach all of this. Site plan review committee application goes with the site plan applications, major, minor.
You're gonna present these at the meeting?
Yeah.
I can do that. So you wanna get, okay, just, it's gonna, people are gonna ask questions, you've got answers.
And answers, so we got the driveway application, so when somebody comes in to build a project now, they'll get all of these documents, and they'll say, here's your driveway application, here's your site plan application, and here's your site plan review application.
You couldn't have them all stapled together.
We will have them all stapled together in a nice little, a nice little.
And our increased fees also left to pay for the papers.
So that'll give us, that'll give us a nice.
For all 10 pages.
This coming in can, you'd agree that this now completes a really good overview. So when we get a sketch, we have more information in here than just the sketch, I think. And that also follows the ordinance that we have, that system follows the ordinance.
And then everybody can actually go to a plan and say, oh, look, this is what's supposed to be there. And anybody can go to the property and to take the plan and look at it and say, it's exactly, yes, you know?
Why don't we add the certificate of compliance?
To it.
To it, and say that at the end of your project, the process of the sheaser is per ordinance, blah, 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 to come before the select board with a request for certificate of compliance. You fill out the certificate of compliance, the select board signs it after they do their site. Perfect, alright, so I will create a, when are we meeting again, two weeks?
No, the public hearing, we're gonna have to get that, that's gonna be scheduled tonight. I suggest we do it for, for November, which is.
Okay, you're here, right?
I'm still here.
Okay, good. Yeah, absolutely.
And then we will present the four items that will go up on.
So we can vote to have a public hearing tonight, that'll give you, yep, that'll give us our couple of weeks.
Give us two weeks to warn.
Alright, then I'll have a certificate of compliance that I'll email around to everybody to have a look at, and then tell me if I'm missing anything.
Mr. Chairman, I think the public hearing would have to be noticed in the paper because it's a public hearing.
10 days.
It should just be into the standard notice locations.
Well, I guess the only question is, since it is gonna be things that, like the fee structure would be going to a warrant, right?
Yep.
They're all going, the four items we're gonna talk about.
Yeah, and I think, do we only have to have two public hearings for this? And then it goes to the.
You only have to have one.
Only have to have one unless there's somebody has a major.
Unless somebody comes in and makes us change a whole bunch of stuff that we have to make.
If anybody shows up to.
But I think you have to, Mr. Moderator, put your moderator hat on. I believe you.
Not at this meeting.
But I, I, the hearing has to be noted.
This is different than the planning board.
Right, and it's not a planning board hearing, it's a public hearing, and it must be noticed as a town public hearing.
That's what you wanted.
Which I don't think we can do for the first.
We have 14 days, excuse me, we have 19 days.
And today's only 11.
We have plenty of time.
As long as we can get it done, but it has.
We can get it done.
Somebody give me the wording by Friday.
Yep.
Okay.
Just, I wanna make sure that we have it in the paper, that's all.
It'll get in the paper, put it on the website, we'll put notices here, we'll put a notice at the store.
Put notices in all the standards places and the website.
Um, what paper, we should put it.
I don't read any of them, so I don't.
I think the other stuff has gone to.
Put it in the shopper.
No, I don't think that's.
That's, that has to be a newspaper.
Then we have to put it in the.
Valley News.
Valley News.
It's in the Valley News.
I would say Valley News.
I had to filter out. So do we, do you wanna just give Alyssa the board, where do we want to use them?
Well, for the fees, I imagine the warrant would say, you know, we're gonna amend the fees as.
Well, okay, the, the, the notice we sell, get, you know, Town of Freuden, planning board holding a public hearing to discuss warrant items, which include additional dwelling units.
To vote on and accept changes to fee schedules.
There's not gonna be any vote at the public hearing.
The planning board's gonna vote and accept changes.
Oh, at the public hearing.
Yep, we have a presentation to the public at the general town meeting. We have to approve this to send it to the town meeting.
Yep.
We approve it at the public hearing?
We approve it at the public hearing night, that's why we're having.
Oh, okay.
Then you send it to these guys, and these guys approve it to go on the warrant.
Okay, got you.
One more time, planning board and zoning board are holding a.
Town of, Town of Freuden.
Planning board, because it's.
Planning board. Planning board will be holding a public meeting on November the 4th. November the 1st, that's right, Halloween's a Tuesday.
November the 1st.
Does it have to be the 1st Wednesday?
Well, I'm.
We're running out of. Can make it the 8th. No, the reason is that we're running out of time because I'm leaving. No, I know.
But I mean, I could just time to do it.
We're not gonna be making any changes. Alyssa, for the purposes of approving the fee schedule, site plan review, and whatever else we're gonna do.
Additional dwelling units.
Yeah, the whole thing.
And, and a provision of Article 9 of the zoning ordinance.
Cool copies, cool copies of all of these proposed changes be available at the town hall during regular hours. You have to have that.
Okay, fine.
Or do we not wanna send, we don't have to send?
We can, well, we can post them on the website, but they have to be available for people to come and read.
Okay, so what, I'd say, Chris, when you make your changes, just put it in the slot out there in the floor of the planning board, okay, and I'll just call to make a copy or whatever.
I mean, where I can send.
We've got Chris's already, we can have the Article 9 thing, it's this, right? That's, so that's, that's up to that, and you gonna make any changes?
Just an additional question, if there are any other changes to the zoning ordinance, we're gonna say those are procedural, but don't.
Probably not gonna get it this year.
So we're just gonna worry, but, so, alright, so the zoning board is gonna meet next week to, for additional changes that we've been talking about, trying to get them to the planning board in the same format I gave you Article 9, and if you're saying, we don't, we're not gonna do that.
They're gonna be procedural, but don't require.
Some of them are procedural.
Well, the procedural ones, then, that's.
Alright, so we'll just talk about the procedural.
Yeah, alright. So, and then you'll have your site plan stuff, put that in there, have it all.
And I will, I'll work on a certificate of compliance. You just have all the words.
Valley News, okay.
No, won't be cheap.
Sometimes referred to as project.
We have, we have a question. So I do have, just for example, the wording on the driveway and wood road construction. Junction of the new driveway, wood road with a town right-of-way must be, must be constructed in a manner of, uh, we were gonna add, shall be at least 12 feet wide. To me, that would be a substantive change, that's not procedural. So is that something that we would just wait till next year to do? Just leave it as a right-of-way period with no width or anything?
What is our driveway permit say?
Yeah. How about in accordance with driveway?
There's, there's something on a permit about.
Something on the permit, then I guess we don't.
Well, I wanna see.
Then you can use the verb, verb in accordance with the driveway permit.
We wouldn't change anything.
Then you wouldn't change.
Because this is just kinda leaves it very vague.
Aren't there, aren't there things in here that, what constitutes driveway?
So the permit that's already out there has a paragraph of width, and I wanna see if it says anything about width.
There's something in here that describes what a driveway should be.
Hang on, there's a bunch of stuff in here. Width. It's already in there. All driveways serving signal residential homes will have a minimum width of 12 feet with proper flare at the intersection with the town road, side ditches where required, be at least two feet outside the shoulder of the driveway.
So we don't need to change it.
Change it there, nope, you got it.
And you hope, remember that. And we need to discuss changes to Article 9, or if everybody's comfortable with, given that you are an attorney and you probably voted in correct language, right? Oh, I gotta revise this wrong.
Well, it more, it was more than just correcting the language or something, that was really trying to streamline the appointment of zoning board members, instead of making the gobbledygook and ultimately having the moderator point it. Select, we gotta come up with the names the first time anyway, so just let them.
Maybe what we should do is table that one for when we get the five-member board in place, because in reality, with five members.
Well, it'll be.
Next year's select board.
You are going to buy a, you know, a town voter for it.
It will be in place in March.
Yep, in March, yep, so, because realistically, all of our board appointments, all of our appointments, they should all be consistent. They should all terminate in March, and they should all be reappointed in April. They should all terminate in March, and they should all be reappointed in April by the select board. And they should get a packet, and we should, we should say, hey, we've got openings on the planning board, are you gonna re, are you re-upping? Are there other people that wanna come in? Because when you do it the way it's being done now, you have no control over whether you have all the people that you need, and you can't keep everything straight, when's your term up, when's your term up, when's your term? Nobody knows. So if everybody has a, a three-year term or, or whatever, and any, every term expires on March the 1st or February the 28th, excuse me, on March the 31st, because the new, new select board voted in in March, second thing in March. So they expire, so they can conduct business the whole month, but then that, those boards are done, and the new appointments happen in April, and then the new board's sitting April. It's just so much easier to do it all at once than it is to have it all over the place and be scattered.
What do you think, delayed it?
No, he doesn't have, you didn't make any changes in Article 9.
No, 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 okay, so we're not, you're not.
No, he's talking about the, the, the boards and commissions, and then I think you're right, I think at that point in time, if you don't want the moderator to be appointing these people and you want it to go to the five-panel select board, that, we should put that whole package together and say, here's how we're gonna do all of this.
That's what that does. At least for the zoning board.
Okay.
The planning board's already appointed by the select board, but again, all of the appointments are kind of scattered, because people who are appointed at different months. I think it was mainly, historically, there, there weren't enough volunteers.
Right, right.
So we could just keep people in place on the board, and then if we do have a vacancy, know that when we have something to come in, that they're finishing up that term, that term limit to March, and then in April, we appoint another person.
Right, but you can just cycle through that over a couple of years.
Or the same.
It's not a, it's not a, you don't have to, like, re, respin everybody. You can just cycle through it and say, well, your term ends on, you know, November 1st, go before the select board on November 1st at the first meeting and say, we'd like to extend this appointment until March 31st.
Yep.
When, and then it's like, yep, for the housekeeping, and then we just do it all.
And then we, absolutely.
With the zoning pitfalls, I mean, hopefully people would be transparent, but if you got five people on the board, the planning board, and then their term all ends the same day.
It doesn't, because they all stagger.
All the terms.
You want that, sir.
But then you can post on those, then you can post on the website, this person's term expires, so that people see, who's the planning board members, when do their terms expire?
Yeah, you have one for three years, two for two years that you do on, maybe years, one for one year, turning them over.
All right, I got a big question. You're saying the town approved of the five-man select board?
Correct.
When was that voted, the last town meeting?
Last year. Well, you were a lulligagging.
I wasn't here.
Approved at the meeting last year. It takes a year for it to take.
Yes.
It's the last election, because the other elections had already happened, so.
Oh, right, okay.
Well, no, no, the, okay, so those, we are there, yeah, now you wanna add two.[1633.02]